I can't even mail it to you.
And I said, "I know."
Well, we got...
We've still got about a minute left if someone wants to sign up for public comment. We have the sheet down here to sign up. Please silence your cell phones.
Do you recall?
All right, folks, it's now seven o'clock. I want to now call this meeting to order. If we all stand for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? None? None in the book? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda as posted.
Okay. Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Gentry, second by Commissioner Rice for the agenda approval for June 12, 2018. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Approval of May 2018 special and regular meeting minutes. You have those in your book before you or on your tablet. Any changes or anything with the minutes that anybody see? Do I hear a motion to approve?
I move that the minutes be approved as submitted.
I will second that motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Wecto, second by Commissioner Gentry for the approval of May 2018 special and regular meeting minutes, May 1st, May 9th, May 16th, May 22nd, and May 31st. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Public comment. We have public comment and we also have public hearing, so... The public comment section, we have two. Cody Norton. Yes, so if you'll walk up here to the podium and state your name, and there is a three-minute time limit. And you may want to adjust the microphone up a little so they can hear you on our live streaming.
Okay. Good afternoon, gentlemen. I am Kelly Norton. I am the chief of Spring Creek Fire Department. Here to discuss our taxes. And before I get started, I'd like to... Everybody that's in favor for Spring Creek would stand up, please, just to show everybody what's going on here. Okay. So, here I have 300 and two signatures for our fire tax. I want to get it done. And I have 14 more right here. If you would like to saw that, see those, I will show them all to you. Fire tax situation has become something that I talk about more than I talk about family life, pretty much. I talk about it from my turnaround. So, I talked to a person this weekend, and they said that they was afraid that everybody on our department was against the community, or wasn't for sure that they was for the community, and I want you to know that. That's why we do what we do. We don't get paid to do anything, and we don't ask for pay. We're asking for some upgraded equipment to do our jobs better for our community. And I can tell you, there's not one person on my department that wants to get paid, wants to do anything. They want equipment to be able to do their jobs correctly, properly, professionally. And I'm just hoping that you guys could put this through and show... Let us show our community what we're planning on doing with the money as far as taking care of them, and we're not going to try to put down the community in any way, make it seem that we're just going crazy with our taxes. We are not going to do that. We're going to try to upgrade equipment, make stuff just a whole lot better for our community, because right now I have some trucks that's well out of date. It's not just maybe not do their job, but there's safety issues. There are 83 models and an 85 model that needs to be took care of. They are hydraulic brakes, and I work... I drive a dump truck for a living, I'd be scared to come off any of them out with a hydraulic brake truck, so... But we do need to upgrade our equipment and just keep our people safe and our community safe, and just let everybody know that we do care about you, and if there's any issue with that, we will be more than glad to put our stuff out. We've had chili suppers that I've got dates here for, 11-4-2007, 3-24-2008, and they were chili suppers and tax discussions to try to do what was asked of us to make sure that the community was on board. And a lot of the guys that was not on board did not show up to these. Some of them did. Some of them had complete turnarounds this year. I put my number out, because I am the new chief now, to where if there's any kind of issue, they can call me personally. I will talk to them and we'll come to a conclusion, or we'll agree to disagree, so... But I'm going to keep it short and sweet tonight, and I thought I'd go out for you, but I hope you guys are in favor of us tonight, because I have a lot of people that really are, and I have a lot more right here, that if you're more than welcome to look at these signatures. And I will let you guys have it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Peter Fland?
Yes, sir. My name is Peter Fland. I have a memo for the board, which I will distribute at the end of this, so that you're not to take notes or anything else. And this memo is being presented at this meeting, and an initial copy has been presented to the record at Sentinel. The purpose of this memo is twofold. It is based on a variety of factors, including public health, public sanitation, illegal junkyards, and homesite garbage dumps. Beyond that, it also addresses the ambiance of Madison County, the jewel of the Blue Ridge, as we refer to it, which I believe must be protected for all of our benefit. At various locations around the county, there are collections of abandoned junk cars and junk. The operation of a junkyard is controlled by the county land use ordinance. In part, that document states from the time of the adoption of the ordinance that there was... That all junk was to be removed within a year. That was in the original land use ordinance and the revised one. I have made the zoning office aware of a junkyard at the corner of Rector Corner Road and Frank Rector Road on at least two occasions, and if I am correct, there has been no attempt to enforce the existence ordinance. In fact, I've been told it's unenforceable. It was further suggested that I speak to the county commissioners, which I'm doing now. I would like to know why, after an ordinance is passed that would seem to address this issue, that it is not enforced. Beyond that, there are many properties around Madison County where abandoned vehicles are left to rot. I believe most, if not all, of these vehicles contain liquids such as fuel, battery, acid, and oil, which could serious impact... Seriously impact the groundwater of Madison County should they drain onto the ground. Why is there no specific ordinance that addresses abandoned vehicles? And if there actually is such an ordinance, why is it not enforced? My second issue is the existence of collections of actual garbage on properties in Madison County. What I found interesting when I asked the question how that was possible, the general response was, "Well, you need to speak to the county commissioners." So, I'm doing that again. I've spent a lifetime in public service. I learned very early that it is best to be proactive and deal with issues as they become known. It would seem to me that good practice would be that there should be ordinances dealing with garbage, storage of garbage, and removal of garbage. I'm talking about a property in Neymar, wherever there are three trailer loads of raw garbage stacked in the yard, and more, put in the woods. I can't imagine that that is acceptable to anyone for a wide variety of reasons. You know, I mean, you've got pollutants, you've got raw garbage. Why are we doing that when this is the jewel of the Blue Ridge? I mean, we want people driving around seeing garbage in front of houses, and that's where it's kept? I have several pictures that will document that, if you wish to see them.
Sir, your time is up.
How bad it is? But I think I've raised some points that are truly of substance and of concern to this group.
But it's next, as far as public hearing for the budget is number four.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Do the commissioners ever respond to public comments, and how does one find out what action the commissioners are going to take?
You can contact our county office and talk to Mr. Porch, give them the county manager.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have in front of you the proposed budget for this year 2018, 2019 for Madison County. The general fund budget is projected to be... Budget presented to you is $24,130,758. Twenty-four million, one hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars, both in revenues and expenses. So, as you know, that budget has to be balanced every year, and what you have is. So, the amount in projected revenues from a variety of sources, which I will go through in just a moment, equal all of the expenses that are paid out, which I will also walk you through. The budget basically holds even with what you have spent for the current year, or what is projected to be spent for the current year, which ends on June 30th. In fact, it's about $148,000 less than the current year's budget. So, that is essentially an even budget when you're talking about something of that size. So, this budget carefully prioritizes limited resources in order to fund inflationary increases for contract services that are sometimes largely beyond our direct control. It increases funding for areas that have been impacted by the drug epidemic in the county. It provides funding for a multi-county effort to start a drug treatment court with Yancee and Mitchell Counties. It allocates restricted economic development funds to match a grant for broadband expansion in the county. It fully funds the capital outlay request for the public schools using their 4042 sales tax funds that are restricted for that purpose, and it maintains the current property tax rate, which has been in effect since 2012, and maintains all of your current fee levels. You will hear at the end some discussion in reference to the discussion about the fire tax, as has been the standard. The budget as presented includes the current tax rate. Anyone who wishes to make that change in any of those areas, when that discussion takes place, you can amend the budget accordingly. That was based on your input from work sessions that have happened, and consistency with how it's been done the past few years. So, revenue highlights, the real property taxes, our current property taxes, is the main source of revenue for the county, makes up slightly less than half of our funds, $10,000, That is based on a 96.5% collection rate, and that is a dramatically improved property tax collection rate over the past five to six years. Madison County was in the bottom five in the state at that time, with a 90.5% collection rate. And what that meant was, basically, you had close to 10% of the taxes that were owed in a given year were not being collected. And in 2013, the board made a decision to go after those back taxes that accrued for many years, to collect those, as well as to improve the current year collection rate. So, by improving that over the last five years to 96.5%, that brings in an additional $628,000 in revenue this year, without having to increase taxes. So, had you had the same collection rate that you had in 2013, you would have $628,000 less in revenue this year. So, by more paying in and sharing in that, you have been able to not increase the tax rate on everyone else. There is an increase, and that's based partly on that 1%. Last year, we had a 95.5% collection rate. This year's budget increases that by $165,000, $165,574. Approximately $100,000 of that is from that 1% increase. The remaining $65,000 roughly is from increased property values, which is also a positive move for the county. So, that is moving in a good direction without changing what anyone would be paying for their tax rate. As you all have collected prior year's taxes and were very successful the first few years, we're slowly declining the revenues from previous years, because that's one-time money. So, if you had... The attorney and the tax collector have been very successful in collecting a number of large and a collection of smaller accounts. Once those have been collected from those past years and people stay current on their taxes, they can't be collected again. So, the projected revenue from property taxes owed from prior years is reduced by $102,000 for a total of $558,000. There was an issue in 2013, FY '14 and '15, where there was an over-projection of those revenues. They projected over a million to come in those years, and we got half of that. By that happening, there was basically a gap in the budget at the end of the year that had to be figured out. So, it's good to conservatively estimate those numbers. Anything you get in above that, you have to offset other areas where money isn't coming in, or you can put it towards your fund balance, which is moving in a positive direction for the county. Also, due to the successful collection of past due accounts, the amount budgeted from property tax interest is reduced by about $104,000 to a total of $210,000. Same situation there. We had some... A number of accounts out there that had years' worth of interest. Those have been paid, so the budget amount from interest coming in is reduced, and hopefully we'll exceed that, but budget low on revenues and hope that more money comes in. Vehicle tax is going up to $900,000. That collection rate continues to exceed 99%. That has dramatically increased since the state implemented their tag and tax together program about four years ago, and that blocks vehicle registration and taxes being paid. So, that's been a good increase to the county and a good move by the state to make that work, because it's helped counties throughout the state, being able to collect those revenues. Sales tax revenues are projected to increase by a total of 5.9% or $207,000. They'll total $3.7 million in next year's budget. That's based on continued economic growth expected throughout the state and in the county. There are various articles of the sales tax that are collected based on... Some are based on the distributed on a population per capita basis. Some go back to the point of sale, wherever they're collected. Madison County has challenges with sales tax, because we are kind of a bedroom community in some ways to a much larger county, so a lot of our sales tax goes elsewhere. But we have seen that number increase dramatically the last two or three years. We are lower in the projected growth. It was 11% last year. We think we're going to hit that from last year to this year, but we know it won't be as high going into the following fiscal year. Intergovernmental revenues, which consist of payments from the state or federal government to cover or offset cost of services that are provided at the county level, those are reduced to by $1.4 million, or 18%. That category includes grant funds, if those grants are funded by the state or another government source. Some of the major decreases in intergovernmental revenue include $304,000 in revenues from the housing and transporting of state and federal inmates. That reduction is due to the displacement in the fall of 2017 of the number of federal inmates we were housing, due to an increase in the number of arrests, drug-related arrests that happened. So, we had an increase in local inmates, and those federal inmates had to be displaced in order to house those locals, and since that time, the feds have been reluctant to pick that string back up. We had budgeted for the current year for 30 federal inmates at $60 a day. We have averaged around 20, and next year's budget projection is based on 16 federal inmates, so that is a $300,000 reduction as it stands right now. The sheriff has been working diligently to try and make up for that gap, because he is mindful of how those revenues benefit both his department and the county, and we're very close to finalizing all the details. I think we're days, if not a week, away from having the information on potentially housing juvenile inmates for the state at a higher reimbursement rate. That would be $244 a day, significantly higher than the $6 per day. To meet the state's requirements for supervision, the county would have to employ four additional detention officers, who would need to undergo training for supervising juvenile detainees. The net increase in revenue from housing juvenile inmates instead of federal inmates, after accounting for $181,000 in additional personnel costs, would be... Would total $307,000 in the first fiscal year. So, you would end up getting about $3,000, $4,000 more than we would have if we were full of federal inmates. So, it just slightly more than makes up for that decline. Those are based on a transition year, because it'll take about six months, if it's something that you all go through with, to get everybody trained and meet the requirements. It may not take that long, but we're budgeting for it to take that long. So, that's based on half a year of housing 16 feds and half a year of housing 15 juveniles. If it's fully implemented and successful for a full year following this year, you would see a net additional revenue of $487,000. So, long-term, if that's something that works out and it comes to fruition, that could be good additional revenue coming to the county. We have seen from working with federal inmates, that is a... It's sort of a volatile revenue source. A lot of things go into that. Sheriff and his staff worked very hard to make that work, but the budget you have in front of you does not include the juveniles. I'm just explaining it to you, because you will probably be revising that issue once we have final information from the state, which we're very close to having, in order for y'all to review it and ask any questions you have. It's important to look cautiously with it, but it is a good opportunity to bring in, make up for, and then potentially bring in additional revenues. $612,000 in pass-through revenue from childcare subsidy is out of your budget. That is both a revenue and an expense. That was state money that used to flow through the county. That is now going to go directly from the state to those childcare provider or the vouchers. So, both your revenue and your expense are reduced by $612,000 as a result of that. $181,000 in Medicaid cost settlement funds received by the Health Department, and that is a reduction. Health Department receives those as a Medicaid provider. That's a result in a change in the formula used by the state to determine that amount of reimbursement for each provider. Health Department does have $450,000 in cost settlement reserves that have been approved from several years of those payments. And then $126,000 in DSS administration revenues due to a decrease in budget expenses for DSS operations. There is also a corresponding expense reduction of about 2/3 of that amount. The budget appropriates $797,000 from fund balance to carry forward funds for restricted purposes. That includes 4042 capital outlay for Madison County schools and the amount of $700,000. Carry forward of Medicaid cost settlement funds for the Health Department and the amount of $50,000, and carry forward for various grants for which the county has received funds in the past, but they have not all been spent out. So, in each of those cases, the money came to the county in past years, is intended for a certain restricted purpose, and you have budgeted expenses from that restricted purpose in the current year. So, there is no money coming from the portion of fund balance that's unrestricted and available for y'all to appropriate. And that's what you have for your long-term savings, your long-term planning for major projects or your rainy day type of situation. So, this money does not take anything from that. On the expense side, with that slight decline of $148,000, and you've got the increase in items that sometimes are beyond our control, overall expenses are roughly even, so they're $148,000 lower. That becomes a challenge with expenses, because we see utilities, health insurance, the things that we contract for that aren't provided directly by the county. Those things continue to cost more, and you have to figure out how you can pay for those within the same amount of money or slightly less money. So, the only real expansion item that's in this budget is $30,000 that's appropriated to contribute Madison County's share for a drug court... Drug Treatment Court Coordinator for Madison, Yancee, and Mitchell Counties. Watauga and Avery in our judicial district already have Drug Treatment Court. Buncombe County, which is a different district, also has a Drug Treatment Court. The idea there is to divert people from incarceration, which we know... which we know costs significant funds to the county. We see that in our decline in federal inmate revenues, and we see it in increased inmate medical costs, which I'll get to in a moment. The idea would be to howl to run thirty cases per year through the drug court. That would be roughly ten for county. It would probably be slightly more from Madison County. This is a beginning budget number. We would still have a number of items to work out with those two counties to determine exactly what the salary and benefits and other expenses for that position would be. But we found it was not realistic to expect one of those counties to go in on one coordinator, and the best way to do this was to share our resources. So it may be less. We may find grant funding to cover the whole thing, but the money is earmarked in the budget in the event that, that we don't. The, I mentioned inmate medical expenses. This budget appropriates an additional hundred and five thousand dollars for a total of a hundred and fifty thousand for inmate medical. That number, the, the county is responsible for the medical care of inmates who are in our custody, and that number has increased, and it's directly related to the number of mental health and substance use issues that are going on with the people who are coming into our jail. So that number, that expense was averaging about forty thousand a year until FY seventeen last year, when it increased to a hundred and sixteen thousand. And so far this year, through May thirty-first, it was at a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, compared to an initial budget of forty-five thousand. So we're moving that up. It is, it's a volatile and unpredictable revenue. It's one that could come in lower because it does depend on the conditions of those we have. So there's a lot of things lining up. So hopefully it will come in lower, hopefully it won't come in higher. The sheriff and the Health Department are exploring ways to get more predictability on that, but we have seen throughout the state that is a high-cost item that every county is dealing with and the state is dealing with, the people who they house in their facilities. An additional thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars is appropriated to cover a three percent increase in the contract with Mission Health for EMS service. That total contract for eighteen nineteen would be one day and one hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. An additional nineteen thousand dollars expense is budgeted for deed conveyance tax. That's a portion of what the county splits with the state on deed conveyance. So as our deed filing revenues come up, a portion of that has to go to the state, and this reflects that. So we have revenues going up as well there. Nine-one-one budget is increased by a hundred and fifty-nine thousand over the initial budget for the current year as a result of the transfer of the four telecommunicator positions from the sheriff's office to nine-one-one. That move took place on April first, but this will be the first full year of the transfer. Sheriff's budget is decreased by that amount, so it's just a transfer. The transportation budget is increased by thirty-nine thousand dollars as a result of the transfer of a position from nutrition to transportation last fall and the addition of thirteen hours of, to some previous, part-time drivers who were previous, uh, full-time drivers who were previously part-time. That move increases the total driver hours at Madison County Transportation Authority by forty-eight hours, and that increased time, driver time is in response to increased service demand. That's offset by thirty-three thousand dollars in savings in the nutrition budget as a result of changing the meal preparation to having two in-house part-time positions handle that going forward. The in-home aid budget is reduced by sixty-six thousand dollars over the initial adopted budget due to a full year of realizing savings from transitioning some positions from full-time into part-time positions as a result of some retirements that took place in the fall. And it also eliminates one position that has been vacant since December. Overall expenses of the Health Department are reduced by eighty-four thousand due to the transition of the formerly full-time position to part-time and reduction of various operating lines. Budget expenses at DSS Administration, which covers operations for social services, those reduced by eighty-five thousand as a result, again, of a combination of a position and some reductions in other expenses there. Child support enforcement, that budget's reduced by thirty-eight thousand, five hundred due to the replacement of a full-time assistant position with a part-time position that took place earlier this fiscal year. We will be seeing those savings in next year's budget. An additional fifteen thousand in expense is allocated in the IT budget for email server costs and additional software costs. We had our email crash a few months ago, and our upgraded server costs are much higher than they were when we started using that server ten or twelve years ago, and we have to cover that cost. Finance budget expenses are going up by twelve thousand dollars due to mandatory audit costs and increased software costs as a result of the implementation of the purchase order system that was mandated by the state and also related to potential audit. We didn't, nothing happened with the audit, but it was something to do to stay current. But our vendor requires more money for an additional module to cover that. Funds set aside for grant matching, which come from sales tax revenue that's restricted for the purpose of education and economic development, are increased by twenty thousand dollars for a total of a hundred thousand dollars. These funds are set aside as the county's match for a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant the county has applied for to the Appalachian Regional Commission to fund a broadband expansion project that we should hear about in the fall. For the second year, the budget appropriates fifty thousand dollars for long-term capital outlay projects, including construction renovation and vehicle and equipment replacement. These funds are set aside on an annual basis and will save for future needs. This is something that was started last year, fifty thousand. It does not go a long way when you probably have several million-dollar worth of expenses, but it's a major step for, for you all to recognize that we need to start saving for that long-term. Public school expense, the budget maintains the current appropriation of two million, seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars for public school current expense and BK operations. So current expense is two million, six thirty-one. BK operations is a hundred and two thousand dollars. That expenditure represents the county's contribution to the Madison County Public Schools for operations. That money can be used for salaries, it can be used for transportation, it can be used for a number of items that the Board of Education deems appropriate. The majority of their funds come from the state and federal government, but local funding is heavily relied on as well. That amount of money from the county has increased by five hundred and six thousand dollars since fiscal year twenty thirteen. Madison County has moved from ninety-third per pupil in local appropriation to at least eighty-fifth, and we're projecting it will be in the seventies, which is still a long way to go, but that's dramatic progress that you all have made, and you are making that for years of funding that was at a certain level. So progress has been made, but this year that funding remains tight just because there's not more to give. One million, three hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars is appropriated in forty-four-two funds. That's from restricted sales tax funds for the purpose of construction, renovation, equipment purchases, and for school debt payments as requested by the Board of Education. Those funds cannot be used for any other purpose in the county budget, and they can't be used for school system operations such as salaries. So it's money they have that can only be used for buildings and equipment. So four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars of that goes to the annual payment for the interest-free loan that was approved for the school building program in two thousand and fifteen, which built the new Early College, added on, built a new library at Rush Creek, and had renovation projects at each of the other schools. Nine hundred and thirty-three thousand is appropriated for various capital outlet expenses requested by the Board of Education. That includes three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars for the annual energy savings loan payment that had previously been paid by current expense. So by paying it from forty-four-two, you are for the second year freeing up that three hundred and seventy thousand dollars in operations expenses. When you all did that two years ago, it freed up the funds the Board of Education used to provide a small salary supplement to teachers from Madison County. Thirty-five thousand, five hundred of that is to expand the one-to-one laptop program for ninth and tenth grades. Seventy-five thousand dollars for server infrastructure. And of course, the Board of Education, this is, you're appropriated them. They can redirect among those purposes and for other appropriate purposes once you appropriate to them. Of that amount, six hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars will be covered through revenues that are coming in in the current fiscal year, and six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven forty-nine is covered from reserves that we talked about earlier that have been accrued over a number of years. You will still have one point seven million dollars in forty-four-two reserves and have more than two payments for the loan program in reserve after doing that. In addition to the general fund, you have the landfill fund, which is an enterprise fund that operates independently of the general fund. None of the property tax dollars that we all pay are going toward landfill. However, there is that hundred and sixty-dollar trash card that we all pay for that does go primarily, that, that goes to the landfill. And there are other revenue sources there, including tipping fees for people who are driving across the scales with construction demolition debris and household garbage. So that is an independent fund. The proposed budget for the landfill next year is two million, twenty thousand, eight hundred dollars. That's nineteen thousand dollars smaller than the current year. A hundred thousand dollars is appropriated from landfill reserves to cover equipment and vehicle replacement needs that have been set back for a number of years and planned for. No specific approval of any purchase at this point, but the money is in the budget. It has been put in the budget in the past years and not spent, so this just sets it there. It maintains that hundred and sixty-dollar per household disposal card fee, which you all reduced in two thousand and fifteen from a hundred and eighty dollars. Maintains the thirty-seven-dollar per ton construction and demolition debris tipping fee and a forty-seven-dollar per ton household garbage tipping fee for commercial haulers. Thirty-eight thousand, five sixty-eight is appropriated to contingency for unanticipated needs that may arise throughout the year in the landfill fund. And I should mention that fifty thousand is appropriated in the general fund for contingency. Fire tax, you can see the list in the budget ordinance. Fire tax revenues for each department that has service territory in Madison County. The revenues listed by department represent the existing tax rates. As you know, the Spring Creek Fire Department has requested a two-cent increase in the tax for their fire district. Their tax rate is currently two cents, so their total revenue is anticipated to be thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. An additional two cents would bring in approximately that same amount, thirty-nine thousand, seven twenty-five. One cent would bring in nineteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. So that is there for your consideration. I will point you to the budget ordinance that is in front of you. This is an important document, as we have seen from headlines in neighboring counties recently. This is an important thing for you to pay attention to. And this is what you all will be considering when you vote on the budget. It lays out in section one and two all of the numbers that I just gave you by category and all of the various expense categories and then the revenue sources. Sections three and four lay out the appropriations from the Fire District Fund based on those values from to those districts. Section five lays out the amount of vehicle tax that is owed through what we collect or what we get in that goes to each of the three municipalities in Madison County. Section six shows where those, where those revenues are coming from. Section five shows where the expenses are coming, are going with the number of balance. Section seven and eight, eight shows the total estimated revenues for the occupancy tax and then the total appropriation to tourism development, which they oversee, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred dollars. Section nine, the nine-one-one emergency telephone fund is an independent fund that is funded by telephone surcharges. Total revenues and expense of two hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and two dollars. That is used to offset some salaries for department management and is also available for capital outlay and equipment purchases. Lays out the amount appropriated for the landfill fund in section eleven and twelve, which I just discussed. Section thirteen and fourteen is the soil and water fund and their money that they have that is outside of the general fund from various services they provide. Section fifteen gives you the, sets your tax rate, which stays at fifty-two cents per hundred-dollar valuation. That is based on a total property valuation of two billion, fourteen million, eight hundred and ninety-six thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and est, and the estimated collection rate of ninety-six point five percent. It also sets your vehicle tax and collection. Section sixteen sets the compensation for the Board of Commissioners, which is the same level as it has been for the current year. Section seventeen lays out the authority, names the county manager as the budget officer, and lays out the authorizations that I have as, as county manager. This is the part that, nothing has changed, but I want to walk you through it because no one should take it for granted. The county manager shall be authorized to transfer amounts between line item expenditures within department without limitation and without a report being required. That's within a department, removing money from electricity to cover fuel. Department heads fill out that request. Things change throughout the year. Finance signs off, and county manager signs off. Section B authorizes interdepartment transfers within the same fund not to exceed ten percent of the total department that's reduced. Notation of all transfers shall be made to the board during the next regular session. That is not something that we have practiced. We have always come to you with a budget amendment where you approve any transfers of money between departments. Interfund transfers established in the budget may be accomplished without board approval. If something is approved to go to another fund, like the TDA fund, it can be done because you have put it in the budget. Section eighteen restricts the county manager from transferring appropriations as contained herein under the following condition. Utility, utilization of contingency appropriations shall be accomplished only with board approval. No salary increases may be made without board approval except when granted in accordance with an official pay plan adopted by the Board of Commissioners. Only three departments have a pay plan. That is Social Services, Health Department, and Sheriff's Office. Sheriff has control. Once money's appropriated to him, he can hire and set and rearrange and do what he needs to do. Social Services has automatic benchmarks, as does the Health Department. Anytime there is an increase due to someone meeting a certain benchmark at the Health Department, I notify you all, but we budget based on everyone being at the full mount, so that we're safe there. But that is the only time that can be approved, and it's only because they've reached, they've gone to a certain training or something that was very clearly laid out when they were hired. Interfund transfer of monies that aren't in the budget will be accomplished only by board authorization. No travel advances may be made without written permission of the county, written, uh, written permission of the county manager. And section nineteen lays out my responsibility to ensure that the budget is controlled throughout the year as we have to make adjustments. We had to make some adjustments this year when we saw that the federal inmate numbers were declining. We had to make some reductions in other departments which came to you. So that lays all of that out. I apologize for the length of that. Apologize to the folks at Spring Creek that had to hear this more than once before, but appreciate everyone's patience through that, and I'm glad to answer any questions you have.
Well, Forrest, I want to compliment you or compliment the staff. There are endless hours that have been put in on this budget, as it has been for the last several years. I want to thank my fellow commissioners, all of us who have worked very hard. We take this process very seriously, folks, and we have for several years. And there's a great deal of work in order to make sure that this is done. We do regular work sessions, which are also open to the public. And all of this was done in hours and hours of work sessions. Those are always posted, or you could call the office and ask for Amanda. Those are always public. We do not stream them live because where we have them at the library, we don't have that capacity as we do here. But again, Forrest, thank you for all of your hard work in what is very obviously a tight budget year. We are proposing a budget that fundamentally is slightly less than last year's budget. That I would say is a pretty rare bird, okay? Very few places are able to manage that tightly, so thank you again.
And thank you all as a board. You went through four or five budget work sessions, going through every detail of, of the budget. Line item budget was... budget, when line item budget was covered and available and discussed, and all the recommendations in here are a result of those discussions. So it's a lot of work that you all have committed to really doing your job as a board to get this to where it is.
Thank you, Forrest. We will continue discussion on that after our public comment. We have one person sign up for the public comment for the public hearing on the fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget, and that is Mike Toosey. And Mike, you also have three minutes. I know you're aware of that, but...
It's not my first rodeo. So before I get started, gentlemen, I'd like to ask you to write down two numbers for me, one hundred seventy-five and seventy-eight point five. I'd like to talk to you tonight about the issue of funding the drug court. As you know, drug courts keep nonviolent drug addicted individuals in treatment for long periods of time, supervising them closely. Clients receive the treatment and other services that require to stay clean and to lead productive lives, but they are also held accountable by a judge for meeting their own obligations to society, themselves, and their families. They are regularly randomly tested for drug use, required to appear in court for the judge to review their progress, and receive rewards for doing well and sanctions for not living up to their obligations. The scientific community has put drug courts under its microscope and concluded that drug courts work better than jail or prison, better than probation, better than treatment alone. Drug courts significantly reduce drug use and crime and do it cheaper than any other justice strategy. Drug courts strike the proper balance between the need for treatment and the need for accountability. Drug courts are six times more likely to keep offenders in treatment long enough for them to get better. Drug courts save taxpayers considerable money. Studies reveal average cost savings ranging from more than four thousand dollars to more than twelve thousand dollars per client. These cost savings are due in part to reduced prison costs, reduced revolving door arrests and trials, and reduced victimization. On those numbers, every day, more than one hundred and seventy-five people in the United States die after overdosing on opioids. That's one person dying every eight minutes. It's like the seven thirty-seven crashing and killing all passengers onboard every day. If that happened a few days in a row, we'd shut the skies down until we figured out the solution. The total economic burden of prescription opioid misuse alone in the United States is seventy-eight point five billion dollars a year. That's billion with a B, including the cost of healthcare, lost productivity, addiction treatment, and criminal justice involvement. You have a decision to make here tonight. Do you want to be part of the solution, or do you want to look the other way and hope that the state or federal government comes up with a solution for you?
Okay, that will end our public hearing on the budget. There's no other public comment or hearing for that. Nobody signed up. Now we have our part of the discussion, which is among the board. And we're going to go ahead and let Commissioner Gentry give his discussion on it, Forrest.
Well, to continue, I think it is a sound budget. It is to maintain the current level of services and where we can expand the budget. The single biggest expansion in this proposed budget is actually the drug court. Due to very strict budget management by a lot of our department heads, all of our people that work very hard every day, we were able to get enough reductions in next year's budget to cover what we know will be our built-in increases. And we have been able not to raise the tax rate. It is a very difficult process, but it's one that we all take very seriously, and it is the single most important thing we do. This is not to say anything negative about our neighbors, but our much larger and wealthier neighbor next door didn't necessarily pay all the attention to this that some people probably should have. But this is Madison County, and we all work together here to do the best job we can. I also want to thank all of you for coming tonight. I know you have different points of view, you have different interests, but it is good to have the room full of people because when you participate, you know what's going on. People look online, people read the paper, and Paul does a great job of covering. He comes to all of our meetings, all of our work sessions. He takes the time to do that, and we truly appreciate that. But we need to have more people in the community be involved and know what's happening, okay? We will not always agree, but the better informed we are, the more apt we are to make the right decision. I also want to thank, again, my fellow commissioners who take this very, very seriously, and I really appreciate that. I appreciate working with them. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Wachter?
It's hard to expand too much more on what Norris had to say, to be honest with you. He put it very eloquently, I believe. We have, you know, at the beginning of this process, we send out to all our department heads and everything, basically every process of the budget that we have some aspect of funding to, I mean, to the entire county, regards to whether it be nonprofit organizations, fire departments, the, each individual county office. And we ask them to submit back to us what they think they need to run next year's budget That, the figure we got back was one point nine million more than what we've got to It's difficult, and we've asked everybody in our county that we touch to basically move forward without an increase in funding and in many cases, a reduction in funding for their individual departments. That's not something that we take lightly. I've attended a few Buncombe County Commissioner meetings. I've got some friends down there that are commissioners, and I joke in our meetings, it's not really a joke, it's pretty serious. We argue over hundred dollar bills the way they argue over hundred thousand dollar bills. And that's the way we have to be because of the size of our county and the size of our tax base. And whether we funded, whether we fund someone or not, or whether we keep their funding the same or ask them to reduce their funding, whatever the situation may be, it's not anything that is out of a personal animosity with anyone. It's just trying to be fiscally prudent. And although the economy appears to be turning around and improving, we can't forecast our budget based on what we hope happens. And that's why we have the budget that we have in front of us tonight. And I really think that's all that I can add to the conversation.
Well, they've said everything so far. All I can say is amen. But I would like to thank our attorney and the tax collector for collecting these back taxes. You see, as our county manager explained, we've gone from ninety percent to ninety-six plus percent, and that's the only way it should be. And we, like they've explained, we've tried to work together, and we've tried to do a budget based on what money we have. We don't have three hundred and fifty million budget like Buncombe County. We've got twenty-four million, so that gives you a comparison. And we do the best we can with what we've got, and I'm never beefing raising taxes. And we've got a frugal county manager here that knows how to spend money, and I appreciate that. And thank you for coming on.
Well, this is my fourth budget that I have participated in, and for four years, we have sat here and worked on this, and for four years, we have come back to the citizens of this county without any tax increase for anyone. It started at fifty-two cents, and it sits at fifty-two cents today. There's been a lot of changes, there've been a lot of things that's happened, there's been a lot of requests, as Matt alluded to. Folks, y'all have a, and I'm not including myself in this because y'all know I lost the election. Let's just let it wrap it out on the table. And that's okay, I'm cool with that. It actually hurt me a lot more when Alabama got beat by Clemson. But this board works very well together. I've said this a number of times, and the board's probably tired of hearing it, but it's more for y'all than for them. If you didn't know whose politics was what, and you were just watching from your chair, I dare say you would know who was a D and who was an R because we don't look at it that way. This county doesn't have Democrat issues or Republican issues. We have Madison County issues. When a road needs to be paved, or work needs to be done, the three Democrats on this board, we don't just vote for the Democrat side of the road to get paved. The whole road gets paved if we have anything to do with it. And I'm real proud to, I have five more months. I'm real proud to be associated with these gentlemen, and also, we have one of the findings county managers in the state. Four years ago, we had to make the decision to hire a new county manager, and we did, and we made the right decision, without question. I'd also like to thank our attorney, Mr. Laws, does an exceptional job for us, was very instrumental in pursuing these folks that were delinquent on their taxes. We're not talking about last year's taxes, we're talking about significantly delinquent. And we had a choice to make. We either had to collect the delinquent taxes or raise the tax rate on the folks that is already paying, and that didn't make any sense. So we went after those, and Donnie, thank you very much for your support, and also the Tax Office, Lori, you and your team, thank you very much for all of that. In November, you folks are going to have a decision to make when you walk into polls. I would tell you, if you're looking for commissioners to serve you, you will not find better choices than the four gentlemen you have up here. Now, some people might call that an endorsement. You can call it what you want, I don't care. I'm just telling you the truth. These are good, these are good people. We all have families here. I would appreciate your consideration as the time comes for that to happen. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Well, first, I, again, would like to thank everybody for coming out here tonight. I'd like to see more people attend our regular meetings that we have. That way, you would understand that this budget isn't just discussed one time a year, it's discussed at least twenty-four meetings throughout the year. We have our regular meetings, and we have work sessions. The public's invited to come to the work sessions. We've put a lot of time into this. Our county manager puts countless hours in, our attorney, everyone in the office of the finance, they're putting in a lot of hours. We, as commissioners, go home and we think about things and then come back and then make the right decision based on what we think's best for the citizens here in this county. You know, being born and raised here in Madison County, it gives me great privilege to sit here and know that I've not had to raise taxes for anybody in the county in order to balance this budget, which could have been done at the stroke of a pen and the raise of three hands. It could have been done that easy. But it wouldn't have been the right thing to do for everybody because that's what we think about, is for everybody. It would have been an easy thing to do for us because we've been, we'd have had more time at home. But we've put countless hours in this. Forrest has worked so hard at doing this. Best county manager we could ever have. I just, you know, we look at each and every item here. We're giving the school the money that they need to operate. I wish we could give them more, but, you know, that takes, that takes other avenues that we, we're exhausted. We have no other, no other way to do that. We've done everything we can to maintain the tax rate and increase it. You know, if we, if we would have left it at ninety-five and raised taxes, we'd still have ninety-five percent of the people paying, and then everybody else would have been paying their additional taxes. Now, that wouldn't have been fair, and we know that. Everybody sitting here knows that. The Sheriff's Department wanting to put in this juvenile, juvenile inmates, I have questions about that because it worries me that if we do that, number one, we will be cutting our space out in the facility for our adult inmates. You know, this is, this is a whole separate situation that we have to look at and discuss later as a, probably a budget amendment. But we look at so many things, people. It's, it's, it's not just sit here tonight, go over what Forrest went over, and then we vote on it, you know? Just like the fire tax that y'all have requested. You know, I take that very serious. I look at it in so many ways. I look at so many avenues of pros and cons and right and wrong and what's best for the community and what's, what the community wants. And again, I thank each and every one of y'all for coming out here tonight. We have decisions to make on the budget. We will make the decisions and, you know, we'll make the decision we feel as a board is the best, and we hope that the citizens of the county understand that our decisions are based on solely the citizens of the county and not personal views. Okay? Thank you.
Now, the budget ordinance, Forrest, the budget ordinance does not include the Spring Creek Fire Tax, correct?
That's correct. If anyone wishes to include it or discuss it, you can either just discuss it or someone can make a motion to include it at whatever rate you deem appropriate, and then there would be discussion then.
Correct.
And then you would vote. If you did that, and it were, if you discussed it, it didn't go in, then you would vote on the budget.
Right.
So if you did, you would vote on as amended.
All right. So we could vote on the budget ordinance and then vote separately on the Spring Creek Fire Tax?
No, the other way around. You would vote on the fire tax.
Fire tax first and then vote on the budget.
Correct.
Just getting our procedures correct. Okay.
At this time, before we adopt the budget for two thousand eighteen, nineteen, I will open the floor for the commissioners to discuss these fire tax requests from the Spring Creek Fire Department.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve a two-cent fire tax increase for the Spring Creek Fire Department.
Okay. Any discussion?
It'll have to be a second first for discussion.
Yes, do I hear a second? No second.
A second.
Okay. At this time, I would, I would like to speak about the request for the two cents. I understand there's a lot of items and things on your list that you had pertaining to the two cents. I understand this is the second or third time y'all have appeared before us and requested I understand your concerns, I understand what you're, what you're asking for. What concerns me about it is the amount of money that it would impose on some of the people over there at a two-cent rate, okay? That, that would be the only negative I see about the two cents. I personally would be in favor of a one-cent tax. That... That, and I don't mean to sound derogatory or any way, but to take the one cent and see how you can utilize that one cent and benefit from the one cent and grow as a community with that one cent and get everybody behind the fire department as you can. Sending out the cards by the chief, that was a great idea, that's a good thing, I'm glad you did that. I went over to one of the meetings in the past and attended and talked to some of the people over there. Got a lot of input and got a lot of discussion over it. And I've, you know, had a lot of phone calls about it, for and against. And I appreciate that. I appreciate you, the people calling me and letting me know your opinions on it. Anybody else?
Are you making that in the form of a motion?
Not yet.
No. Just checking.
I mean, you guys realize that we're running around in nineteen eighty-five vehicles, right?
Yes, sir.
Matt?
What?
Would you like to make a comment?
I've made all, I asked them all when we were in our meeting with them, I saw the questions I had at that time.
Thank you. Well, I've been all over Spring Creek, talked to a lot of people. There's been more people for the fire tax this time than there was the first and second time, without question. I'm really torn as to, as to what the right answer is. I know we have a lot of people here tonight that's for it. I've had a lot of people call me that are for it. I've also had a lot of people call me who are against it. And you have to weigh all of those factors. I've had people say to me, you know, "I'm really not for it, but I'm kinda tired of fighting it. So, if they want it, just let them have it." I've had that comment. I've even had a few people say to me, you know, "I'm really fearful for someone to find out that I'm against it." I've had that comment made to me. "I'm fearful." My response time might be longer. I'm just telling you what I've heard, folks. I guess the way I see it is someone once said, when you're in the middle of something like this, the best thing to do maybe is to make both sides unhappy. Some wants two, some wants none. I would agree with Chairman Brigham. I would, I would recommend one cent. You can always come back. I'd like to see if it, if it were to be passed by this board. I'd like to see, I would like to see what would happen if you were given roughly twenty thousand dollars. I would like to follow that. And if that does pass and is approved, I would suggest that y'all remember that the rest of the community is watching that and paying attention to how that money is spent. I don't, I don't know specifically what, what you would do with twenty thousand additional dollars. I don't, I don't know. But, I figure twenty thousand, in my eyes, is a good start. I would like to, I'd like to put in the form of a motion that we increase the fire tax from two cent to three cent, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Rice for the one-cent increase on the Spring Creek Fire Tax. Do I hear a second? All second. Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, raise your right hand. All right. That will end the discussion for the Spring Creek Fire Tax.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
As I said, you guys should stop down business. Look at our nineteen eighty-two, eighty-five trucks. Bumbers don't work.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If there be no further discussion, I would recommend that we approve the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget ordinance as presented by our county manager.
It would be as amended, would it not be?
Correct. Yes.
Correct.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
I have a motion by Commissioner Gentry for the approval of the two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget as amended. And I have a second by Commissioner Rice. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay? Okay. Okay, Mr. Rigman.
Good evening, Rick.
Good evening, good evening. Let me just pass these out first as one for everybody, including Mr. Attorney. I'll start by saying, I know how to clear a group out, don't I? I knew I was next, and they left.
I think it's too circumstantial.
I know, I know. And I will also say, I sat at one of these meetings when the commissioners still met at the courthouse. There were two members of the public at the budget review hearing, Connie Molland and me. Commissioner Briggs will remember this. You guys explained to us, the people of Madison County, all two of us, your rationale behind some of those, those decisions you were making. So, thank you, and I think it was wonderful you have so much interest today.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairperson, commissioners, members, members of the public who have remained, thank you for letting me have them.
And those who are watching.
Those who are watching.
He only gets three minutes, right?
No, no, he's got the next hour.
I asked to be on the agenda. I promise it will be a little bit less than the last, my friend. Thanks for letting me have time on this agenda today. My name, for those of you who don't know me, is Rick Molland. I'm here to give you an update about a small local cog in a huge international machine called Rotary International. For the last eleven and a half months, I've had the privilege of being the president of the Rotary Club of Madison County. That's one of over thirty-three thousand rotary clubs worldwide. With thirty-nine members in our club, we're not the smallest, we're nowhere near the largest. There are over one point two million rotarians in the world. Some people think of rotary as being a group of old white men meeting over lunch, having cocktails or whatever, and yakking about the old times. Things have changed. Almost half of our club is made up of women. A rotary international, rotary at the international level and at the local level thrive on one thing, and that's service. We believe in service as what, the right thing to do for our communities. In fact, the new rotary tagline is rotary, people of action. We don't just attend meetings and yak once a week. Our guiding principles are called the four-way test. I'm gonna say, I'm gonna tell you this now, because it'll come up a little bit later. And it goes like this, and I'll let the rotarians in the room go along with me if they like. First, is it the truth? Second, fair to all concern? Third, will it build goodwill and better friendships? Fourth, beneficial to all concerned? We kind, that, that, that is woven through the fabric of what rotaries do throughout the world, not just us in Madison County. Since we were formed fourteen years ago, our primary focus has been on the youth of this county. And for this past year, it's been no different. And I'm gonna tell you a little bit about what we've done since last July, when I became the president. However, to do what we do, we have to make money. And I think we're all familiar with our signature fundraiser, and that's the Hot Dog at One Hundred Ride in July. It's a shame the folks from Spring Creek Fire Department aren't here still, because they are fabulous supporters of the ride. They line the backside of Doggett Mountain to make sure our cyclists are safe. Anyway, the Hot Dog at, we attract, last year, we attracted almost three hundred riders from all across the southeast, riding distances from thirty-seven miles to a hundred miles. Mr. County Attorney is one of our favorite hundred-mile riders. He does, for those who don't know, he does a fabulous time.
He's already in training, he told us. Tells us, by the way, yes.
Mr. Eggers, who's not here at the moment to defend himself, rode thirty-seven miles two years ago, sixty-five miles last year, and we think he's gonna do the hundred miles this year. It's an amenity that anyone can participate in.
He's gotta heal up first.
But, the most important thing is, not only do we attract those three hundred riders, most of, most of them from outside of the county into the county, and they became a boon for economic development, for economic growth in the county, we also raised seventeen and a half thousand dollars. And I'm gonna tell you about how we, we spent that on our youth programs. Other program-related funding comes from our Invitational Golf Tournament of Wolf Laurel. If there are any golfers here, come and golf with us next, next time. We have a Booth, a Heritage Festival. We now run the Finland Five K Run Walk for the Arts, which used to be put on by the university, and now the Rotary Club does that for some funding. And all told, our revenue, you know, we heard Forrest talk about twenty-five million dollars, give or take a dollar. Our numbers are a lot smaller. We all told, our revenues last year, this year, were twenty-five thousand. As I said, the bulk of our focus is on youth-related programs, which included, and I'm gonna sort of kind of work up the grades in the school system. We give a Rotary Four Way Test themed coloring book to every second grader in the school system. So, we start them, hopefully get them thinking about the four-way test. You know, is it fair? Is it beneficial to everybody? Will it build goodwill and all those other things? Every third grader in the public school system receives a dictionary. If you've had, if you have kids in the public school system, or you had kids in the public school system, they will, they'll be able to point to their first dictionary, which came from the Rotary Club. We teach a junior curriculum, junior achievement curriculum, on the practicalities of staying in school. How, how the economy works from a, from a, from a young person's mind to up to an eighth grader. So, we taught kids in the third, fourth, fifth, and eighth grade. And we hope they kind of learn a message, like, it's worth staying in school and not dropping out at the earliest possible time. In fact, we actually, just recently, we sent twelve students, students who were selected to go to a business ethics luncheon, which is sponsored by Junior Achievement in Asheville. And they all get to have lunch with, with lots of other youth from all around the area and sit at tables with adults and get to talk about ethical issues, questions of ethics, and then hear a fabulous motivational speaker. So, that's another thing we do. We like to recognize those who aspire to greatness. From both the high school and the early college, we recognize one high school student, one typically senior, sometimes junior, one student a month, and they get recognized as the Rotary Student of the Month. And if you read the news record in Sentinel, you'll see they get their picture in there regularly. I think I only had my picture in there once, and that was, that was a goal of mine, to keep my face out of the paper. We also do a similar thing for the school, school employees. So, at, once a month, for the nine months of the school year, we recognize a school employee, one from each school. We go around in rotation, from central office and the early, early college, the early childhood centers and so on, to make sure that we recognize those who have done above and beyond. And they have been recognized by their peers, not by the school administration, but the peers. We have an essay test every year based on that same four-way test. So, if they learned from the beginning all the way through, by the time they're seniors in high school, they can participate in a four-way essay test contest and have the opportunity to win a five hundred dollar prize. On the subject of money, we also give three scholarships. A two thousand dollar scholarship to a four-year college, a fifteen hundred dollar scholarship to a two-year or a community college for someone wanting to do an associate's degree, and a fifteen hundred dollar scholarship to a child who probably would never go to school, to college, after he or she graduates from high school, because it's just not in the mindset of their family well-being. We want to encourage kids going forward and getting a scholarship. So, that last scholarship's kind of fun. It goes to kids who, as I said, will probably won't make it. Sometimes, they don't make it even when they do get there, but we want to fund them and give them that encouragement. And we sponsor a club at the high school called Interact. We've got, it's a very vibrant club. We've got thirty-five high school juniors and seniors who are in that club, and they do good work not only within the school, but out in the community. And likewise, we have one at, one at the university called Rotaract. And in fact, we have the, the person who counsels them in the room today. Well done, Connie Molland. We also have, finally, we also have a program called Make a Difference Grants. We actually grant out money to youth-related programs, which, which help, which goes to those programs where it could maybe make a difference for that program. We, maybe seven or eight entities apply each year. We haven't yet finalized the current year, so I can't tell you who received a grant for this year. But, last year, let me, FFA received some money to help them do, go to their, to their, their distance competitions. The grad, this high school got some money from us for the graduation project equipment, so that they could do a better job there, to community children's outreach. And also, Madison County Arts Council Jam Program is a regular recipient, because we think the athletic music and what they teach at the Arts Council is a very, very beneficial program. Okay, so, yeah, we volunteer, we do a lot of those kind of indirect things, but also, we volunteered in the high school to coach and judge the senior speeches. We judged a science fair, we proctored the exams. We read and tutor and coach students at all the local schools. And we provide, provide a sounding board for the FFA as they develop and practice their speeches and go ahead and win them some very, very high accolades, both at the state level and at the, at the national level. We even actually went to school this year. We went to Brush Creek Elementary for a meeting. We went to the Early College for a meeting. And gentlemen, let me say, the facilities you funded through that school enhancement project, we very much appreciated being in those and recognize they are state-of-the-art and very good programs. So, thank you for that. And we also went to the high school, we go there, there regularly. Okay, it's not just about the kids, folks. In the, in the community, for more than ten years, we have cleaned up Main Street from Marcel Baptist all the way up to Higgins Branch Road, two miles of Main Street in Marcel. We clean that up four times a year. We cleaned up, we clean up around the island in a stream cleanup once a year. We partnered with the Madison High School Interact Club to do a riparian, to develop a riparian buffer on the upper banks of the Gabriel's Creek in Mars Hill. We planted fifty trees in honor of Earth Day as part of that project. We partnered with Marcel University to help them tear out, do the inter- We partnered with Marcel University to help them tear out, do the internal demolition, if you like, of the Carter Humphrey dependency house. And I guess most of you don't, don't know what the Carter Humphrey dependency house is. It's a little house behind the Carter Humphrey House, which is on the historical record in Madison County, not in Madison County, the National Historic Record, and it's a guest house there in, at Marcel University. So that, that work was, was done this year. We provide, we heard about the drug epidemic, and we heard about the money the Sheriff's Department needs. We give teddy bears to the Sheriff's Department so that when they go into situations where children are in a traumatic situation, maybe their parents are being arrested, or has been a car wreck, they can give those kids a teddy bear. We call them trauma teddy bears. We funded Winter Fuel Assistance and, and through Neighbors in Need, and also, um, family food for, for Christmas and Thanksgiving through the local church. And since Mister Wellendorf is sitting here, I'll tell you, we also gave money to a program, a, a area program which benefits the local people called Rotarians Against Hunger, where we pack three hundred, four, three hundred thousand meals of foods that get redistributed by Mano Food Bank back out into the western North Carolina area. I'll finish by pulling back to the big picture of Rotary International. Rotary International has one of the highest-rated philanthropic foundations in the world. I'll say that for the benefit of the folks from, from mission here. Local Rotarians gave almost ten thousand dollars of their own money towards the programs which are near and dear to Rotary International, which includes the eradication of polio worldwide. We're this close to eradicating it. We also give money to Alzheimer's research and for shelter, disaster shelter in, in cases where there are disasters. So that's kind of what we do. Okay, as we move into the next year, the good news is you won't have a verbose me coming to speak to you at the end of the year. But my place as club president is going to be taken over by Sandy Stevenson. I think you all know Sandy Stevenson, and many of you know her as well. She's further, planning to further disrupt our traditional approach from Rotary. Those old white men yakking over lunch, remember? And she's introducing one meeting a month. This could be of interest to people who cannot get up for seven-thirty in the morning on a Thursday. One meeting a month will be in the evening, followed by an opportunity for a social activity, probably in a local bar. So.
Stimulate the economy, right?
Stimulate, you betcha, and stimulate the economy. And also presenting a series of community talks, once a quarter, at the, through the li, at the libraries, which everyone will be invited to, they'll be advertised, and I don't, I think one of, one of the early topics is going to be Alzheimer's research and the way in which those programs work. Our weekly, I talked about our weekly meetings a little bit. As I said, it's not just old white men yakking. It's not any. We, we usually include a speaker. In fact, let me see, Forrest has spoken at our, our, our meetings. Sam Lunsford has talked to us about solid waste. Sarah Nichols about economic development and the Manufactured Art, Manufactured Art Park, which is being developed in Mars Hill. Suzanne DeValle from Literacy in the library. Rachel Potter from the Health Department, and Tom Fields came to talk to us as well. And next week, I throw this out there, Tony Floyd, the incoming president of Marcel University, will be speaking to our meeting on the twenty-first. I assure, I speak for Sandy Stevenson and the rest of the club. You all are welcome to come to any club meeting, particularly if you think you can get up for a seven-thirty in the morning meeting. But those, those evening ones might be rather fun. And of course, if you want to consider becoming a member, just contact me or Sandy Stevenson. We'll, 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 we'll talk to you about it. Anyway, as you can see, we are no longer your grandfather's Rotary, going to yak over lunch once a week. We are people of action, striving to make a difference in Madison County and in the world. And thank you. I meant, happy to entertain any questions or comments you might have. Otherwise, I'll keep, go down, sit down.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mister Gillum and Mister Los, for allowing me a little bit of time.
Can you lift that down, just speak a little louder into it so they can hear?
It won't go out on the feed unless you speak.
Okay, okay. I'll, I'll try to keep my face this direction. But thank you so much for allowing me a little bit of time on your agenda this evening. I am joined by my colleague, Mister Steve Metcalf with Policy Group, who works with Mission Health in some of the local government work that we do. In front of you, you should have the printed presentation that I have Mr. Goode with you this evening, and also some additional supplemental materials that I brought to you as well. So hopefully you'll have all of those in front of you. I wanted to come and share just a little bit of, of information with each of you this evening about the letter of intent that Mission Health has signed with HCA Healthcare. We made that announcement on March twenty-first. And on your first page of your, of your presentation handout, you'll see a little bit of a steps in the process outline. The letter of intent means that both parties have mutually agreed to further evaluate a potential relationship between them using a defined process with certain parameters. Said another way, the LOI provides an outline of what an agreement might ultimately look like, but it's fully contingent upon additional information, and it is non-binding. So in that outline that you see before you, we are basically in step two of that process, which is due diligence. That due diligence period will last about ninety to a hundred and twenty days. As we go through that process, we're sharing information with HCA Healthcare, and they're sharing information with us. It's very much a two-way conversation that we're having. And then should we reach a definitive agreement, then that would need to go to, for regulatory approval, and that would go to the North Carolina Trade Journal for approval. We anticipate that that would also take approximately ninety days. So if we do come to a, an agreement, then we would look at closing that agreement toward the end of the year, sometime toward the end of the year, we would become a part of HCA Healthcare. So that's sort of the process, the steps in the process and the timeline. So why HCA Healthcare? And why are we looking at doing this now? So you may be asking that question. I may refer to some of these other supplemental materials as well. And I'll share with you that these materials that you have, the supplemental materials, are from our website. And that card that you have is also just the website address, and I'll talk to you a little bit more about that as well. As part of the fiduciary responsibility of our board, the Mission Health Board continually explores what's best, what's in the best interest of Mission Health and in the best interest in the health and well-being of the residents of western North Carolina. In that context, each year for at least the past eight years, the board looks at whether remaining independent is in the best interest. And so based on, you know, various factors that Healthcare faces, the challenges that Healthcare faces, government businesses, and our payers demanding, you know, more, that providers assume more risk and that we reduce costs, that, that creates, you know, a gap. And so this year, as a result, you know, we're, you know, our board made the decision very, very wisely that they would like to look at the possibility of, of considering joining a larger healthcare organization. Why, why HCA Healthcare? They're one of the largest in the nation. I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with HCA Healthcare, or heard of them before. But they appreciate and value what Mission brings to HCA. HCA itself has superb clinical performance. They're at the very top of the nation in core measures and other clinical performance parameters. They have numerous magnet hospitals. I believe that in your supplemental materials, you'll see that a hundred and six of HCA Healthcare's a hundred and seventy-nine hospitals are on the Joint Commission's list of top performers on key quality metrics. They are powerful research and education infrastructure that they have. They're the lead enrolling site of seventy-five percent of new cancer drug approvals. They single-handedly completed the NIH trial on central bloodline, um, line blood infection, central line blood infections published in New England General Medicine. They're the largest provider of graduate medical education in the nation. And that's really significant because that potentially is a pipeline of new medical graduates within the system. Scales, there, there's synergies, there's scale synergies that precisely match our weaknesses. So really, that's economies of scale. Their unprecedented scale of forty-four billion in annual revenue. And they're the lowest cost buyer of supplies, drugs, medical equipment. It would be impossible for us to achieve the necessary cost savings alone without, without, you know, looking at unacceptable consequences such as, you know, reducing services or programs or quality. And those are simply things that we're, you know, our board and our leadership are not willing to do. On the, the next page of the presentation, you'll see just a, just a slide that sort of shows the, the size of HCA Healthcare, the enterprise itself. There are a hundred and seventy-nine hospitals within HCA Healthcare, forty thousand licensed beds, a hundred and twenty thousand ambulatory surgery centers, sixteen of those are GI, sixteen GI centers. There's over a hun, excuse me, over a thousand physician clinics, forty thousand active medical staff. There's also over two hundred and fifty-two thousand employees, eighty thousand nurses. So it's a, it's a very large enterprise. So that kind of shows you how those, those economies of scale would benefit Mission as a, as a part of HCA Healthcare. So how does joining HCA Healthcare, this is the next page in the presentation, how does joining HCA Healthcare benefit our community? HCA Healthcare has a proven track record of making meaningful investments in communities, not just in its healthcare operations, but beyond. On one of the supplements that you'll find, you'll see some of their, some of their contributions that they make to their communities. But a key component of this agreement, should it move forward, is the creation of a very substantial foundation. And while the final details still need to be looked out, its assets will be focused on the, on the people who live in the communities of western North Carolina. Then that would be a very substantial foundation. With the potential of tens of millions of dollars or more available each and every year for improving the health of the residents of western North Carolina and beyond, the possibilities of this new foundation are nothing short of transformational. In addition, Mission Health currently as a nonprofit, becoming a part potentially of HCA Healthcare within the for-profit organization. So whereas now Mission is not subject to, to local state property, or local and state property sales, use and other taxes as a, as a for-profit, then we would be subject to those taxes, which would benefit those local community governments. And so I'll also just back up over here on some of the supplemental materials that you have, just to go over a little bit of that with you. You do have a handout, again, these materials are from our website. For-profit versus nonprofit, there's some questions that we receive a lot about what does that mean to community members? So this is just a little infographic that shares some information. There's really two key, uh, key differences. One of those is what I just mentioned. It's about the, the taxes. Whereas as a nonprofit, we do not pay taxes, as a for-profit, we pay those local and state taxes. The second is that we are currently governed by our, our volunteer community members and our board, and that would change. So those are the two key changes that would take place. We would still treat Medicare, Medicaid patients. We would still provide charity care and uncompensated care, would still reinvest profits into community programs. And, and so there's a list there that you can look through, but that's just a very informative sheet that you can look at to learn more about that. I'll go back and share a little bit with you about the card that I provided you about our website. We do have a website. It's missionhealthboard.org. And that website is set up solely to share information with the community about, and our team members as well, about this process and to keep that updated with current information. There's also an FAQ section on there, which you may find very informative. This is where you can go, and if you have a question, you can enter your own question in, and we will respond to that question. And this is a really good place to, to keep up, updated with current information, where we're at in the process, what's happening, as well as just if there's questions, particular questions that you have that may already be, have been asked there. Again, right now, we aren't in the due diligence process, so there's a lot of the details that we're working through that we don't have the information on just yet. As we work through that process and that step, and with the goal of reaching a definitive agreement, then as, as we have more information, we'll share it on that website. So with that, I know I went through that very quickly, so hopefully you, you captured that, and you do have the materials in front of you, but I'm happy if you have any questions you'd like to ask.
Well, I, I've got one. It's the, probably the question I get most frequently, I guess, is, you know, obviously, we have relied on Mission for several years now to assist in our, not only assist, to actually provide our ambulance services here in Madison County. And I know that's not really one of HCA's preferred lines of business. What, has there, has there been any consideration in regards to that in this particular merger? Or are, are we mostly going to be subject to the overall company philosophy, and we prefer not to run ambulance service?
Well, it, you know, we're working through the details on that, but as far as what we know today, we do not anticipate, or, or, or do not have any, um, any reason to think that that would be our EMS services or MAMA services would be impacted, based on what we know today.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much.
Hope things are well. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Commissioners, if I could just say one quick word.
Yes, sir.
As a, I wanted to thank you for letting us be here tonight. And just as a former manager of that county next door, I appreciate Forrest's budget tonight, and I appreciate the time you folks have put into this. It was, Forrest, that was a great presentation on the budget. I did that four times, and none of it was as good as what you did tonight. I promise you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just, but, just to follow up with Carrie, Kara, the, we were part of this process and thinking through this. We, we, we had some information on this before it went public. And the main question that I asked, I told these folks, I said, you have to understand, I was born in that hospital. A lot of folks, we have seen our families die in that hospital. It means a lot to us. The central question will be, will the quality of healthcare stay the same or improve? That's the first threshold question. And I think, at least in my own terms, to do it together, that, that question is, I feel comfortable with that. And there's a lot of other things to be asked, and we appreciate that, and you will as time goes on. But I had to congratulate Forrest on his budget. That's a big time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much.
Mister Attorney.
So I'll be, try to be brief tonight. You've seen these last four or five years. While I can tell you with this one, especially in a couple of months, we, I've, I've told you, we've had a lull because of stacking in the tax office, being a, trying to transfer over with, with data there. But Laurie and her folks are gearing back up now, and we, we've had a pretty good month here. Forty-eight thousand dollars in delinquent taxes have come in, which is pretty consistent with what we were, were doing for several months there. I think if you take a look at our budget, Forrest may be able to tell you exactly. I've not done it, but we're either at or exceeded our projected revenue levels.
You need about twenty thousand more.
And we got one more month to go. Twenty thousand out of what? Around six, eight?
Six, out of six.
That's pretty close. Heard that, Laurie? Heard that? She told me last week they'd been on the telephone calling. You know, most, a lot of folks have, have, have referenced tax collections tonight. You know, all I do is, is file the things in, in the courthouse, file the, the procedure. You've got these, I see these, Laurie here, and that's her sister, though, right? You know, they're She, you know, they're just, you know, they kind of, a very good job and a tough environment. They, they really, you know, should be patted on the back and appreciated for the hard work that they do. Been a pleasure to work with.
Don, it's been a pleasure to work with you. You did a great job.
Ms. Brooke. Someone?
I'll be fast, I just have one tonight. At the Health Department, they've had a vacancy for a few months. It's for a part-time breastfeeding peer counselor. This person works with expecting and new mothers to help them through that process. It's completely funded by the state through Medicaid, so there's no county dollars in it. So the interview team is recommending Ms. Brenna White for that position as part-time breastfeeding peer counselor.
Any questions?
I recommend that Brenna White for the position of breastfeeding peer counselor.
I will second that.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Briggs, second by Commissioner Gentry for the position with the Health Department. And stated, all those in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
All right, Rhea.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Rhea.
First thing I have for you tonight, gentlemen, is the monthly financial report for May. On the front page, you will see our current unrestricted and unassigned bank balances, total four point nine million, almost five. Of that, three point eight belongs to the general fund, nine hundred thousand to the landfill, and one hundred and seventy-eight thousand to nine-one-one. This also, as we've talked about before, excludes money that is restricted. So any forty, forty-two or unspent grant, Medicaid cost sum or amounts already promised via encumbrances in the PO system. We are currently, should be sitting at ninety-one point six-seven percent of our budget. Page two gives you the summaries of the revenues and expenditures per fund. General fund, May, we had a loss of five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, which we normally expect this time of year, we received most of our revenues. We're paying, our debt payments come in April and May for the most part. Year-to-date, we have a nine hundred, excuse me, a nine thousand dollar surplus. So that's very, very small compared to where we were last year. And we have spent, according to this, we've received and spent about eighty-three percent of the budget for the general fund. With that, we have sixty-eight thousand in contingency at this time, or at the end of May. Landfill, you can see, has had a loss of seventy-one thousand, almost seventy-two thousand, and for the year, the two hundred and forty-five thousand profit. And the nine-one-one fund had a gain of five thousand seven hundred dollars for the month, and that's twenty-eight thousand five hundred for the year.
Appreciate that.
No. No, that's just.
Is there any questions on this part of the financial report? All right, and we'll move on to the checks that were written for the month. So there's a lot of information on there, it's normal. We wrote a total of just over a million dollars in checks for the month of May. I have detailed as much as possible on anything that seemed out of the ordinary.
And we do appreciate those notes.
Yeah.
They helped me too, a lot.
Well, it helps us to understand on the big amounts, on what, and why.
Rhea, the, going back to the revenue.
Yes, sir.
Rent on county property. Is everyone current?
As of Monday, all May rent has been received.
Okay.
So we have not received all the June rent that was due, that was already due.
May's paid up.
Any other questions about the checks? Okay. So the next thing I have for you, gentlemen, is Budget Amendment thirteen and thirteen B. The thirteen B is a paper handout that should have been sitting at your chair for you. In keeping with our previous month's protocol, we, any increase in revenues, tax or other departments, we've been trying to offset the reduced federal inmate revenue. We have seen some increase in revenues with Amb Control, which is nice, and we're working really hard there. All the departments are really working hard to try to be good stewards of our money. And just trying to, you know, keep everything tight and make sure we've got the money where we need to spend it. Thirteen B came in late today. The, during the transition between Pat and Terry and DSS, they received some additional adoption promotion funds that were not in the budget, and we need to put this in the budget so they can spend the money. But that is straight pass-through money that doesn't really affect county dollars. We already have the money in our bank account, sitting there, ready to spend.
Can we approve both of these, or do they need to be approved individually?
Both at the same time would be great.
Any other questions?
Any questions for Rhea on Budget Amendment thirteen and thirteen B?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve Budget Amendments thirteen and thirteen B.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Gentry for the approval of Budget Amendment thirteen and thirteen B. Second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner White. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay.
The next thing, I have two pieces of information on the tax liens and releases, and I need two separate votes. The first thing is the May twenty-eighth property releases and refunds. Totaling, looks like seven thousand seven hundred and four dollars and twenty-two cents on the releases, and fourteen hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighteen cents on the refunds.
Chairman, I would move that we approve the May two thousand eighteen releases and refunds.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Gentry to approve the May two thousand eighteen.
Pause for a second, please. I need to consult with our attorney. Spotted something there, guys?
Yeah, just, hang on. No. Give me the judge.
This is not the stuff from the E N R.
Okay, that doesn't include that. Very good, that's what we're looking for. Okay, thank you.
Your motion was for part one.
Yes. My apologies, sorry for the delay.
Go ahead. Do it here a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rice. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Now, part two.
Part two of the releases and refunds, it says at the top, releases if the assessor does not agree with, so you can tell them apart. These were people that came to the E N R board, asking for these releases and refunds, and the E N R board cannot authorize those. The commissioners have to do that during meetings. So this is list two.
So while I support whatever decision the rest of my board makes wholeheartedly on this, I have to recuse myself because I have a family member that's involved in this mix. Understood?
I got you. Okay.
But I did not sit in all the meetings, all the members.
I didn't either. Is this what?
This is what the board, the E N R.
Yeah. But that, that's a toll, is that we came up with that tax provision. I knew that we accepted, as shown.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Briggs for the acceptance of these releases, and second by Commissioner Gentry. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed.
I'm done. Thank you, guys.
You're done?
You're right.
Thank you, Rhea.
Commissioners, I do want to reiterate, as you have approved that budget, again, differences in how you all in this county approach budget and spending versus some of the issues we have seen in Buncombe County, to be clear, I don't want to refer to our neighbors, we were talking about Yancey County, but of the, you all held multiple work sessions, working on this budget, you have asked multiple questions. You have, you look at that budget, as Chairman Briggs mentioned, twenty-four times a year, because you're looking at budget amendments, you're looking at financial reports, you're hearing reports of what goes on. You, consent agenda, we have seen that a building, apparently a twenty-seven million dollar building was approved to a consent agenda in Buncombe County. There was a time in this county briefly where consent agendas were used. A couple of y'all were on the board at the time, nothing that major was in there, but the public couldn't tell what was happening. And y'all often had to start every meeting by pulling off half the stuff from consent to put it somewhere else, because there had been an approach to put some things through. Usually not necessarily financial, but there were issues. We hold each other accountable in this county. You all look after things, and the approach of self-enrichment is not, not there with what we've seen. And, you know, it's been out there for several months, but I know that there are someone in this county who decided to take advantage of that environment out there right now and send out a letter to state that I had given myself a big raise for what y'all had done. It's absolutely not true. Nothing in the letter was true. All their comparisons to other counties were not true. And it's largely been ignored and hasn't been out there a big time, but a few people see that and don't know any better, and they think it's real, because when you look at the things that are happening around us, it's not that big of a stretch to think necessarily. It's not true. This county has been very good to me with what I have. The travel expense that I receive from the county, which is certainly not fifty thousand dollars, anywhere close, I track all of my travel, I pay for every hotel room if I'm traveling. Purchase office supplies, I purchase things on behalf of the county because I know we can't afford it. That's because it's what I choose to do, y'all don't force me to do it. And whatever is left over, I give back to the county in some way, because that's not something that I should profit of. And that has been something that has been how I believe since I came here, that's how I hope I always believe. I worry that people weren't the way they ended up twenty years ago, so you gotta be mindful of that over time. But this county operates very differently, and our citizens are fortunate to have that and need to continue in that direction. The, one bit of sad news for us as a county in the last month is we are losing our county planner, Sarah Nichols, who has done a very good job in that role for the past two and a half years of county planning and economic development. She worked a total of eleven and a half years, including her time at Soil and Water, has been an asset to Madison County. She's got an opportunity, a land of sky that she's chosen to take. If she's gonna leave us, I'm glad that she's going to an agency that will work with us, and we will have the chance to continue to work with her. But the work that Sarah has done just in the past few years, things we don't know about, you rarely find someone who has the, I think you find them, you just think they don't exist, the creativity and also the ability to do whatever it takes to get something done. And she, she may live just over the line, but she cares deeply about our county, and we hate to be losing her, but happy for where she's going, and we will be moving forward with that position shortly. The first item you have is the inmate labor contract for next fiscal year. That is three inmates at a dollar per day. Total cost, projected days of two hundred and sixty is seven hundred and eighty dollars per year. Recommend that you approve that of this budget. The alternative is significantly more expensive.
I believe this is even a contract that Brother Bill can appreciate, a dollar a day. So I'll make, I will move that we accept this contract between ourselves and Craggy Correction List Two. And I will happily second that motion.
Mr. Attorney, have you had the chance to look at this?
It's the same contract we've used year after year.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Gentry for the inmate labor contract. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay.
The next is a larger contract for EMS service. As you know, Commissioner White referred to it. We've been with Mission for about twenty-five years, I think about twenty-seven years since the contract, since it first went outside of being a county department. The budget you approved includes the funds for this increase, but you would have, you have to approve the contract as well. Total contract amount of one million, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars. There is a change in the contract. Previously, the contract had set out an amount to be billed per base fee plus a mileage fee. And sometime last year, when there was a lot of discussion about the contract and that got out in the public, we started to hear from some people who hadn't been billed for that amount. So when we questioned Mission, they told us they actually haven't been billing that amount, they have been billing according to what they call their charge master, which they use for every service that they bill for. We received some, we asked for clarification and received additional information from Mission on what the impact is to a patient. Their charge master, billing rates fluctuate annually, but they're equivalent to a hundred and fifty percent of the Medicare fee schedule. They say that's the rate billed, but not a dollar, not a dollar-for-dollar impact on the patients. The rates listed on previous contracts were flat amounts and did not reflect the level of care provided. The base fee charged for the transport depends on whether basic or advanced life support care is required, and whether it's deemed emergency or non-emergency response. So they are making that change, which in reality, they've been doing for probably many years, and we just didn't realize it. And the other change in the contract lays out the specific language for how they will deal with, they charge per event for standby service, and the previous contract allowed that to be a hundred dollars per event. The new contract says that for two hundred dollars per hour and sets a minimum two-hour service. And they lay out the exemptions that they have based on that. We added to that public school-sponsored events because they do stand by currently for athletic events where they're needed and have not charged in the past, so they included, they agreed to include that in there.
So they did agree to that?
They did. It's for one year. We talked about it in January, February with Mission, they were willing to go several years, and that was, sounded like a good plan, and the HCA deal came out shortly after that, and HCA is saying one year. We need to be looking at options if HCA doesn't want to do this. And we have to look at what's best for Madison County. And we haven't done any in-depth review of that in a number of years. Despite what I always said last year, there's, there's not been any examination of going elsewhere. When that has to happen, it will happen with in-depth review, and that's something to start this fall so that we're ready. And if HCA continues, then that'll be fine, if not, we're ready to go, if we need to look at other options. But Mitchell and Yancy have continued for one year as well.
We need to have the audit certificate of the contract.
And of course, this only binds us. Other civic organizations and whatnot are free to negotiate their own standby rates and whatnot with, with Mission, correct, Don?
This is what the contract for them providing, it's what they would charge those organizations.
Right, okay.
Which in theory, if that is, in theory, we're helping offset. Which in theory, if that is, in theory, we're helping offset whatever, and this is the issue whenever we deal with Mission on a contract in EMS, and I appreciate everything they do. But with Mission's providing something like, with Mission's providing this for free, we're also helping provide that for free. And that's a good thing, good service for the community, but somehow, that cost has to be made up somewhere because they have to pay. And that's just what we would if we did. It's not that they're doing anything wrong. So, the tighter that language is, could potentially benefit us as well because it reduces the amount that has to come from the direct county payment.
And as we've talked many times before, there's no such thing as a free lunch for anybody, so. It all has to come from somewhere.
Of course, it's a big cost, but it's really like having another department, so it sort of makes sense.
Last year's contract, did it have, on section three J, did it have the same wording about the advisory committee in it?
That they would need?
Yeah.
Yes.
They did.
And they've not met in about a year. I would say, half the time I've been county manager, they have been between directors, and since Michelle arrived, it's been several months, we just haven't started that matchup again with all, all the community with her. I'm sure we'll get that started back up. The first year I was here, they didn't meet.
I wasn't aware that we had any county commission-appointed representatives there.
Yeah, Nurse Gentry's the representative.
He is the, so we just have one?
Yeah. Yeah, y'all appointed him, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
It says three.
Yeah. It says three, does that, did they fill those with somebody else? Those three, well, there'd be two spots. It says three commissioners.
No, it says three commission-appointed representatives, it doesn't necessarily say three commissioners. It could be, but it doesn't say specifically that.
That has been me, the emergency management director, and.
Okay.
Nurse Gentry, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Well, I want to know, thank you.
So, you all would need a pre-audit certificate, and you need to make clear that it's, as amended, to include the standby exemption for school.
Standby exemption, okay.
Mr. Chairman, if there is no further discussion, I would make a motion that we approve the contract with Mission Health as presented to us by our county manager. Indemanded, Adamith?
With amended.
To school reduction or no cost for school activities. Thank you, Matt.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gentry, second by Commissioner Winkle, for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen EMS contract with the amendment stated. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay.
Some surplus property items. You all had approved a thirty-day due diligence extension for the breakaway property at your last meeting. That expires tomorrow. They are requesting an additional thirty-day extension, and I would recommend you approve that.
Donnie, do you see any issue with that?
They are having a hard time trying to figure out where all of those sixty lots are up there.
We know that feeling.
Yep.
So, since it's for legitimate purposes, I'll, I move that we extend the due diligence period for another thirty days.
He's retained a law firm, and there's a law firm in Asheville who's trying to look at everything, so he, he is.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Winkle, second by Commissioner Gentry, for the extension of the due diligence period for breakaway. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay.
Next, you have two offers for surplus properties. One is a Laurel Highlands Lot One, bid amount of thirty-six hundred dollars. Tax value fifteen thousand fifty-one dollars. Five thousand one hundred and twelve dollars were owed in taxes and fees at the time of foreclosure. We've had that for a couple, at least a year.
We're paying HOA fees on this property?
Not for that one, I don't think, but it is a.
Listed at forty-five.
It's, there's some.
Roadway issue.
Roadway issues.
We've, there's probably, we've foreclosed on lot, like, four or five lots up there. So, that's, that's a common one that has issues with it.
I move that we accept the bid of thirty-six hundred dollars and start the upset bid process.
Okay.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Winkle, second by Commissioner Gentry for the acceptance of the thirty-six hundred dollar offer for the point-six-eight acre Laurel Highlands Lot One. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay.
Next, you have an offer on the Wolf Mountain property. Sixty thousand dollar offer, two hundred and fifty thousand three hundred and ninety-six were owed in taxes and fees at time of foreclosure, and the property tax value is two point seven million. This is the one you all had several offers on last year. It's been listed with realtor for about six months now.
That's a low amount.
But it does exceed what we called it back at auction for.
It is less than a previous offer we rejected.
Yeah. Yeah. Deal in average is less than barely a thousand dollars, make your guess.
Yeah, but it's less than an offer we rejected.
That's right. That's right. It stays a thousand dollars in there.
Must have put it up, oh, somebody made you a bid on it, what do you think?
Well, I mean, that's the, that's the good process to put through it, and we can always deny it if we don't want to. Any more comment? Okay. Do I hear any motion on this piece of property?
Motion to reject it.
You made a motion to reject it. Commissioner Rice has a.
I'll second that motion.
Motion to reject it, second by Commissioner Gentry. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? All those in favor? It's all right like that. It's all ahead. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Boris. Mr. Chairman, if there is no other business to come before this meeting, I will move that we adjourn.
I have a motion by Commissioner Gentry to adjourn. Second by Commissioner Rice. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you again, folks, for coming, and invite your neighbors next week.
Thank you. Hey, Paul.
Yes.
Can I see you a second, please?
So, you can't buy friends, gentlemen?